Well, here again.
We heard them to let's be asked.
Is there anyone here in opposition to this request or satisfied the members? Yes, sir.
This is the administrative part. Not, this isn't for the driveway part.
Just.
This is just on the lot side.
What you got, Deidre?
I don't know the exact where I'm.
Come to the elector and then let's talk.
Uh, Richard Shelton, five oh eight Long Hill Road, Georgia. We, uh, our representative Shelton Land Company of that owns the property to the south and east and north of the search property. Particularly concerned about the east and south. Uh, we, uh, that is my family acquired this property nineteen fifty-five from John Howell. We have, um, one issue and that is the each parking line. We, uh, of course, we didn't, we didn't, weren't able to get out there until yesterday. Based on our observations of where Ms. Herring had placed this, this line is, is it on our side of, it takes parking lots. This picture is the best we can take. These are our roads, the pine trees that run north and south. You can see on this pine tree is Ms. Herring's property. And, uh, we look over toward the Howell property over here. Essentially, Ms. Herring has placed a pin that takes about three rows of our pine trees and the service road. Our, our, uh, my cousin, let me see if this. My cousin who is a registered archer has drawn where we think the line is on the point. And as you can see, it is, it is west of the line and putting it on Ms. Herring. There's my picture. We, we think that, we think there's the same issue upon the little short line north of, well, we haven't had an opportunity to get up there and look at them. I was hoping Ms. Herring would be here today. I talked to her last week.
Who, who drew the original plat with these lines? Has it been surveyed?
Survey has, yes, sir.
Ms. Herring.
Uh, matter of fact, if I may show you on the survey. Uh, he was showing me that access road that he was talking about is a cut by a fire break because they cut every so often. And I don't think he follows the exact same line every time. Uh, I know for a fact, I watched him last night, we came over about a foot. Uh, he was telling me that not only is this John Howell property, but there's also that line there that is just in the old line. Nobody owns it. But his property starts another seven foot past where he has his mark. And he was pulling it off the survey. He is a surveyor, uh.
Who is the, is that the same?
The surveyor.
Oh.
Southern.
Southern survey.
Southern.
On here. Yeah.
Who is that?
She. He's the surveyor. She is the office, um, the actual safety stewardess.
It's, it's her company, her and her husband's company.
Yeah.
Well, at, at this point, if there is a disputed property line, that is not something that this board is, is not within our power to, to make any kind of ruling. That's gonna have to be handled through the courts or through negotiations or whatever with surveys and, and, and all that. This, this is not something that's before us. And correct me if I'm off base, but regardless of where the line is, that still does not affect the first case we're dealing with, which is the appeal. And if anything, it might have a impact on the second case. Depending on where the road is and depending on how this is determined, the ones is determined from the surveys and whatever they have to do to rectify that problem. It may mean that if in fact the access road that we may grant, if it's on the Shelton's land, then, uh, the Howells are gonna have to move.
It's not.
It's not.
He's, he's going the access road in the fire break.
The, the access road is further down into the property. Yeah, it's.
Yeah.
They might be a property.
Yes, ma'am.
And the line in Houston, especially, uh, we got a fight that's going to happen. He's going with the access road.
Okay, just. Well, I thought he was saying that actually it really might have been the same, one in the same.
It's our perimeter, our survey authority.
Right.
That we try to maintain between us and our neighbor.
Well.
I got a question, Deidre. Do you have a, uh, you got hired somebody to do a survey of your property now?
No, no, this just came up week.
Yeah.
Uh, the, our seller, John Howell, had a survey when we bought in nineteen fifty-five. And where my cousin drawn his lines, there's pins in there, money, which we've always sought for a line. And now, what we see, based on, just going to say yesterday, their surveyor has marked off the line to the east, in essence, taking land from us.
Sure.
And so that's. About how much difference?
About fifty feet.
You're a.
Four, four, a quarter of a mile.
Have you spoken to him?
Uh, not about this, though. I didn't know about it. Actually, I called and talked to him last week about the whole, the whole situation. But not about this, though. We ended up getting to get out there and we can.
Well, I don't think we're talking about the property lines.
No.
Well, I leave that to y'all. I mean, I, I think.
It's out of our.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying, Deidre, is right now. The, this potential problem is not something that's gonna affect this board. We can't alleviate it. We can't do anything for it. It's gonna have to be handled between you and the family and the surveyors and whatever y'all have to work out if the line's been moved and done up.
There was an impact there when we come through that fire break. We couldn't find it. So it's a work there.
Well, and that, that's what I'm saying, Deidre. This is something that the surveyors gonna run back in here and they gonna have to resolve that. If, if in fact you are using forty, fifty feet of their land and it's gonna have to be worked out legally that you can either continue to use it or that you discontinue to use it, as the case may be.
Well, she may be right.
Basically, until you get another survey to go in there and, and, uh, check out the monuments, those pins, and rerun it.
Well, that, that, that would be one option. Of course, our, our line, but our pin, our line is what, what part has it been possessing to? That's consistent with everybody's conduct and behavior for the last.
Fifty years.
Fifty years. So, I mean, there, there's, that will have some play on where the line is. But where the line is, it can be, if, I don't think it's gonna affect the ultimate result of the whole lot.
Well, you definitely don't want this plat recorded if it's got the wrong meets and bounds.
Well, I mean, if y'all approved it today.
That, that's not what we're doing.
We're not, we're not.
That's what we're not doing today. We're not approving the plat.
We don't have any approval powers on the plat or anything. All we're doing is, number one, the administrative appeal, it's been interpreted concerning the lots. And then the second case, which we haven't even started talking about, is to allow them a lesser type road than is normally required for access across the riverly into the property. And either case, neither one of them is gonna affect your situation, your legal rights. You're not giving up anything. We're not infringing any way on you that I can see.
Well, if you, if you vote fairly on both those issues, then this, this lot could be subdivided and then submitted. Is that right?
Only if it meets the legal survey pins and everything. If there's a question with the survey of pins, then again, that's something that you and the Howells and whoever's gonna have to take it up with the surveyor. And, you know, did you in fact find the pins and, or did you place the pins or is it drawn incorrectly? But in any case, that's not something that is gonna affect us. And if we grant them the variance for the road and the family division of the property, they still have to legally supervise the property to meet the state of Georgia and lounge camp. And if the survey and the drawings is not accurate and somebody's got a case against the surveyor or, or whatever, because we granted it here does not mean they have now obtained your property or vice versa. If their property line is right and yours is wrong, as it's drawn, they do, they don't get your land.
Hey, let me address where we're coming from. We, we have observed the increased residential use of this property over the last ten, fifteen years. Whenever, whenever there is an increase in residential use next to us, it raises issues of agricultural and residential being next to it. And what we've experienced here is, uh, we, we lease our property for hunting. We traditionally leased this two hundred and eight acres for hunting. And, uh, over the years, this particular parcel has gotten increasingly unmarked because we've had some issues with foresters coming across from particularly from.
Track five.
Um, we've had, we've had our hunters call the game warrant, come out there to get on the foresters, try to do something about it. Eventually, this has led to where difficulty with us being able to mark our property and, get the return that we feel like we need to get. Of course, this gets back to financial gain on one hand, if they're attacked, because we believe very strongly if they're attacked. Uh, we, we also need to make some reasonable return off our property. You know, and if, if this goes through, whether that's an issue today or later on, then each one of these parcels will have a lot of family ties. So whereas now I think the entire sixty acres can allow five family members, which is what has led to the density we have now, once this goes through and the state divides it, each one of them.
Now, that's, that's what we were saying, that the, the estate and all of you've done, the estate ties stuff can only be done one time. And this will, this will be the time.
That, yeah.
Is that, but is that one time per parcel?
Per the parent track.
Oh, per the parent. So this whole thing is considered a parent. Let me ask you something. Is there a limit as to how many residences you can have on these tracks? On the, on the parent track and then if it is approved, the six eight, six tracks, how many residences you can have per track?
Without subdividing those properties in further, as you see it, each track can have up to five homes, um, which even if it was a track without subdividing.
As long as they are family members.
As long as they're blood, family ties. Now, if they want, wanted to subdivide, they'll be right back in front of you.
Unless they're making five acre tracks, which they can make by right, any day.
Right.
Well, no, because they won't have road friends.
They won't have road friends.
They, well, yeah, they, they would have to, they would have to create a subdivision type plat with proper access over the railroad, which, based on what I've seen with railroads and crossings and all, it can be a real, real battle. They're, they're, they're about to box themselves in, in my opinion, by doing this. Once, once they exercise this family tie at this time. And if we grant them that lesser road on the next one, they really don't have a lot to work with, a lot of things to stand on if one or more of them wanted to cut it up into any small pieces. I mean, that's gonna get it really, really hard to do.
But my understanding is that just this, that would be twenty-five families that can live here, possibly subdivision, and that's a large group?
I would say a couple of tracks would be hard to get well and separate teams and distances and all that.
And there's other restrictions that's gonna limit how many you can put. Just because it says you can put up to five does not mean you have.
Developable.
Developable, usable, five. There, that, you know, it gets into that point and here we are, we're way off subject. You get into, we're gonna share this well, we're gonna share this separate team, the health department's very tight on that kind of stuff. But anyway, we're, we're, we're starting to get way off track here. I understand what you're saying, Deidre, but I, I think regardless of what we do here is really not gonna have a direct impact on you because your case is gonna have to be handled.
By Superior Court?
By, by court, by survey, by negotiation with them over the line.
Well, I, I mean, I'm, I'm beyond the line. I think we get the line looked at. I, I'm just concerned about the increasing residential density and the impact it's gonna have on our land. You know, the winner's the loser because every time somebody makes a decision, we lose, we lose. I mean, that's, that's part of, uh.
I understand what you're saying.
What would help us would be, would be a fence along the market line.
I'll be happy to build one up as soon as we, uh, get it in my name.
To at least, I mean, we don't even know it's them on the foresters, but we do know their, their forester's acting. And if that would help prevent that, maybe, maybe that would.
Deidre, is there no fencing between?
No. There's no, there's no anything. There's no.
You've got a comment right there that once the line is determined by whatever means y'all determine the line, if they want to put fence or some inscription through there.
Well, is that, can y'all break that official code?
No, I mean, that's, that's really getting out beyond, again, where we're, where our aim is.
Trust me, I'll put a fence up right where my survey says it is. But no problem at all.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Can you not, can we get a fire break for things to do? I mean, we're on our side for a fire break.
Once we get it on the line, Deidre.
Deidre, you want that?
You want that?
Yeah, you probably didn't. Well, because it's not gonna be part of our action, we, we really don't need for the fence. Yeah, we probably could, but it would have to be on the variance from the road or not the administrative field. Okay, back to where we are. We are discussing the administrative appeal, uh, the interpretation. Any other discussion, uh, discussion, your questions, or are we really gonna vote about?
Just for your information, we did, before that, the rail system began in eighteen ninety-seven and it's completed in eighteen ninety-five.
The road's been there a lot of times.
I want to make a motion.
I have motion on the floor from Mr. Alvarado, and that motion is to deny the administrative appeal. I have motion on the floor, uh, Mr. Alvarado, to deny the administrator of the team. Yeah.
Deny is in deny staff's interpretation.
No. Approve the staff, affirm the staff's interpretation.
Motion to approve staff's interpretation.
Affirm.
Affirm staff's interpretation. Okay, do I have a second? I have a second from Ms. Howell. Now, everybody in favor, please raise a hand. All opposed, raise a hand. Your vote is three, one. Next case, the VAR two oh one four dash oh three, for VAR Howell State, Howard Road out of Georgia, variance.
Yes, the last request before you is concerning to J. R. Howell State. They're requesting a variance for chapters four and six of UOOC, as they both pertain to, um, lot front department. Similar to the setting case on the agenda, they are requesting a variance to divide this state and the state, each track of this state will have access through a recorded three foot ingress, egress, easement. Um, the request received staff's, um, favorable recommendation for approval. Um, have an answer to the question.
Any questions, any discussions for Carmella? They, this will be a privately maintained road. They will have to maintain it minimum width, minimum tree overhang to allow for emergency fee for the in and out access. Any other questions, any discussions at this time?
Well, I have a question. Say track number two, that one that's way down there in the middle, sort of super inaccessible, um, gets sold. And now Family Smith is living there.
Mm-hmm.
And Family Smith, yes, their property is conveyed this easement to drive along the driveway, um, is that correct, under the property, though?
Yes, it goes with the property.
Under the property.
Yes. Perpetual.
And what if, um, wait, let's see, track number three seventeen acres could theoretically be divided into five, uh, three five acre tracks by right?
They can request it, but they will be before you. They would have to request a variance through the lot front department.
Because of lot front, so it only goes to these lots, not any subdivision of these lots?
That's correct.
But five family member ties could divide each of these lots?
Yes. Without subdividing.
Do you have a greater?
Without subdividing and as long as the land was support.
That's a full drive right here, a blade over there.
So you're gonna do it with a blade, not a grater? Okay. I, I, I got a box blade. I got a regular blade. I.
There's three of us out there, we'll, we'll make down the roads. It's in the mist right now, it's kind of raining, but I just can't get into that.
Well, that's, again, I'm a little bit worried about, you know, if Family Smith gets down there in track two and then is counting on Family Howell to keep the road up for the ambulance to come in. You know, sort of what I would do for my family is maybe not what I do for my friends.
You have to think of that. Family Smith is five, went to this situation, knowing what the conditions. Yeah, knowing the conditions, so it's not like anyone.
A big surprise, not a big surprise.
You don't like this.
I think this was someone that had her palms, like, already had a, uh, a key in front and they have personal. That's why, where I am, that's just the note I have. Make them out here, hundred, four, like, no, proof.
Okay. Any other questions, discussions for Carmella at this time concerning this request? Is anyone here supportive of this request, uh, who the family is here in support of this? Anything, you know, you would like to add to this?
Uh, just the fact that we are out there, we are already doing this, and we're still gonna be out there, uh.
Questions, any discussions? It'll be up to them, between them, to maintain the road satisfactory conditions. If it reaches the point that they are not satisfactory, I assume the county does have the capability to go in there and tell them that, you know, if you have a problem, we will not come in because the road is not.
Accessible.
Accessible, and that's the only punishment, I guess, so to speak, is if, if they don't feel like they can get in there with the fire trucks or whatever it is they need to do, then they won't go because now they are on the private property, not public property.
That's correct.
So this has no liability on the county?
So it, I mean, it is imperative of them to maintain good access for their safety and their security.
And we, you know, we, if this was an development for, you know, profit, you know, we would support it, but we, we're our sensitive families.
I understand.
And we, we are concerned, safety was a concern for us, mercy is getting back there.
Well, I, I have another question, though. If we denied this and said, oh, actually, all those lots have to touch the road, they can't touch the road because there's railroads in the way. They, they don't have any way to touch the road.
No, not buying from.
No, that railroad is, like, totally cuts them off. They're behind the railroad. They'd have to be way on the south side and, and.
They have a lot of property from the Shelton.
From the Shelton.
They would have to buy property further down because there is a better crossing further down.
Or the older road. Sounds just like the next.
That's called.
It could happen, yes.
Very intense.
It's not, because you're trying to live.
Okay, any other questions, discussions? Is anyone here in opposition to this request? Any other questions, discussions before I call a question? Can I give a motion on the request to allow or disallow the use of the road and to grant the lots without public drilled access as per?
Make a motion that we approve this variance in addition to subject property maintaining appropriate access per county requirements.
I have motion on the floor from Dr. Howell. Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Ms. Howell. All in favor, please raise a hand. For all your nouns. All right. We got a couple more things, pin two, approval of minutes. Anybody got any problems with the minutes? I didn't see any something, mercy. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes that's presented? Mr. Alvarado, I'll just call you a doctor for your day. Mr. Alvarado, make motion to accept the minutes that's presented. Can I get a second? Thank you, Ms. Portman. All in favor, please raise a hand. Thank you very much. Any new business, any old business, anything we need to talk about?
Nancy and I want to have a party.
I think you and Nancy need to get together and put together a party back to do, we'll talk about it. Uh, Mr. Mark, you have a next.
I have one question for you, a discussion question. Uh, as it relates to minutes to the board, I was not at a meeting last night. There was a correction made on the minutes in terms of listening to the president. We used to listen to the absent. We had a request to make a members excuse, which I think we reflected in the minutes for June through just now. Is this something we want to continue doing going forward? Or am I sure we might not have the minutes, probably we may not have this, but that's what.
I think what we were looking at is.
I see that you just proved that I reflect that from knowledge. So the question is, is that a regular thing to be done or is that a little?
I, I felt like what we needed to reflect is who is here, who was not here, now not even here, who was not here and, uh, because we got to have somebody to be able to keep up with unexcused applications over a period of time.
Okay, so we need to correct that approval of the minutes to include who was excused from Ms. Alvarado, were you excused or were you?
Yes, that is on. It was excused.
Can I make a suggestion?
Go ahead.
In the minutes, more than any of the members present, members not present.
Complain, complain.
The names of those not present, we put in break a sequence, unexcused, if it is unexcused. That would have to add.
No, that's fine. Just so that there's an opening to.
Yeah, so we, right, so we have a list of who was here, who was not here, and then those not here, we list whether they're excused or not.
Anybody got a problem with that? I mean, the, the intent is to be able to ascertain who was not here and were they excused or not excused in relation to the number of applications before we have to take some kind of action.
All right. Related topic, but the next question. For those people not here, like today, we have a few who are not here, at what point in time do we want to declare excused or unexcused for those folks? Because sometimes we know, sometimes we don't.
On a permitting basis, somebody needs to, phrase it, somebody needs to pull my chain and say, hey, we got this one out, this one out, this one out, who has contacted you?
Okay, what we can do is contact you, like after the meeting, noting who was not here, and get your take whether it's excused or unexcused, then include that in the draft minutes to be approved at the next meeting.
True. I think that's kind of where somebody would have a problem.
That's what we'll do.
Because at, at this point, uh, Scott notified me that he was not gonna be able to be here. He is out of town. he is out of town.
And back, he's stuck out of town.
And stuck out of town due to the weather, and so I feel like that's excused. And I have not heard from, uh, the bird.
Right, she contacted us right before the meeting and simply said she was not going to be here, I don't know why.
Well, barring other information that makes her delight, I would have to say that was probably unexcused.
Well, we can follow up, if there is a...
We can, we can touch base on that.
And then we'll reflect in the court.
Any other, new business, old business?
Oh, for those who have not met, our intern is sitting in the back room, he's observing meetings as he's able to, since you all, Tuesday afternoon, he's here on Tuesday afternoon.
Does your intern have a name?
I'm sorry, you did a great job, Susan. Senior at the issues, um, and he's actually looking, going to public administration and maybe working in local government.
Hopefully, you can swear.
So, we're educating.
All right, any other...
Some, just do some research, some different...
Can we assign, I, I'd love to get Mr. Jones a word.
Any other business to conduct, any other? We stand adjourned, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Carmella took up for you.
Yeah.
Thank you. I, I explained, I explained to her, that's, that's ridiculous, ridiculous, don't you think? Railroad is not like a road. That's ridiculous, you know, Mark. That's been there since eighteen ninety, good Lord, those people that call that way, dude. You know her? That's a little, little, little thin. Little tin, I like to call tinous, little tinous. See you, my man.
See you.